And the meeting is called to order.
So there were no action taken in closed session.
No action was taken in closed session?
Do that.
Please stand for the flag salute.
Salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we are at D here, announcements of the results of the board member election per ed code one five four zero zero. So exciting. We have new trustees to announce tonight. The governing board results for the November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two general election have been affirmed. And for the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Area One, Mr. Wesley Kegel is appointed as board trustee. And in the district's area two, there were three candidates that ran in this area and Ms. Catherine Harper won this spot by five hundred and ninety-three with five votes, five hundred and ninety-three votes total. And in area five, we have Ms. Annette Coonsey who was appointed in area five. And so congratulations to you all and we need to swear you in. So you are official. So what we can do, since there's three, what we could do is kind of go in the front here and all do it together.
I will probably get a picture.
Right.
So now we'll move on to agenda item two one two point three nine one, the annual organization of the board and election of the officers.
All right. So action item, but first we'll open this for board discussion and discuss these three roles. We need to appoint, elect a president, a vice president and a clerk to serve the district board. Any questions on these, these roles? Would you like to talk about them? There is a description. The president, of course, whoever this ends up being facilitates, runs the meetings. Vice president steps in if the president's not here. And then the clerk signs a lot of the documents. Tracy's the clerk now.
Yes.
Mm hmm.
I think Wes would, with his experience, would make a great president.
I'm fine with that if somebody else doesn't want it.
Well, you are the senior most member on our board here.
That sounds good. Do we make a motion or do I need to make a motion? Someone need to make a motion?
Well, we'll go through all of them.
Okay.
Real quick. Yeah, I'm in full agreement of that. Yeah.
Thank you.
Vice president?
Vice president. How about Tracy? Because Tracy was the clerk this last time. So is everybody okay with Tracy as VP?
Sounds great.
Yeah.
And then clerk.
Casey, ready to be clerk?
Wonderful.
Good. Good. That good with everybody?
That's wonderful.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. And then.
So we just need to do an action item for all of those or can we do it together, Kawhi? We can do it all together. Okay. Oh, yes, we need to make sure we do number four. Yes.
So either Annette or Catherine.
I'd like to make a motion to have the officers' positions held as indicated just previously.
Need to.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, and appoint the superintendent and secretary for.
Yeah.
I can second that. Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion from Annette Coonsey to elect Wesley Kegel president, Tracy Skinner, vice president, Casey Raboy clerk, and Lois Yant superintendent as secretary to the board, seconded by Catherine Harper. Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Right. And we'll scoot on down to item number two one two point three nine two, approve the schedule of regular meetings in board governance calendar.
All right. Thank you, President Kegel. The board shall hold one regular meeting each month except for the month of July and the meetings are held at seven PM on the third Wednesday here at the Galt City Hall Chamber unless this is not available. Special meetings of the board may be called at any time by the presiding officer or a majority of the board members. And for your reference, we have two calendars, one calendar to finish out this fiscal year, the school year, and then also a potential twenty-three, twenty-four calendar. I do want to note one, one typo on June two thousand and twenty-three. We've indicated the, the wrong Wednesday there for the regular board meeting. The regular board meeting should be green on the twenty-first. That's the third Wednesday. And we are potentially going to have a special board meeting that is, is budget time on the twentieth, the night before. We have to have a hearing for, or a public notice for, for the, the budget.
Is there any other updates to the calendar that we need to be aware of?
There are not.
Okay. And that is a motion item. And I get a motion to approve two one two point three nine two.
I'll make the motion for item two one two point three nine two.
Thank you, Casey. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy. Aye.
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 Thank you. And then we're going to move on down to two one two point three nine three, designate board representatives to serve on committees.
All right. So we have the current committees listed for you down at the bottom and there's a brief description of the committees. We have the cast city and schools together. We have the Galt Schools Joint Powers Authority, JPA, which we share with the high school district, transportation committee, the Sacramento County School Board Association Committee, and then Board Policy Committee. And so we would like to open it up, trustees, to discuss what committees you would like to serve on this year.
I'm interested in doing cast this year. One that I haven't done yet. Everyone's, we need one more and then an alternate.
I'll, I'd be happy to be on cast as well or either alternatives if it's really something that someone else.
If you want to be on cast, that's fine with me.
It, you know, but if, I don't want to unseat you, Wes.
No, no.
Continue. I can continue being.
I usually have a hard time getting there because I, when I work, I work in Stockton, so I don't get off.
Okay.
Work until like five o'clock. So I'm always pushing to get back here. So if you're available, then it's totally fine. If the other two are fine with that, we do need an alternate.
Be the alternate.
Okay, Catherine be alternate. Okay, we can do the whole thing or wants to do each section at a time? The whole thing? Okay. And then the G, the JPA, Joint Power Authority. Tom and Tracy were on there, but Grace was an alternate. I don't, I do not mind being an alternate on that.
I can do it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just volunteering, but if you guys, if it.
Yeah.
Please speak up if you, if you're interested.
I just had a quick question. Would we possibly end up on one or two more? Because there's another one that I'm interested in as well, but.
Yeah.
On multiple. Okay.
Usually everybody's on.
All of them.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know about that.
It's usually everybody's on two and then at least you're an alternate in one of the.
Okay, perfect. Excellent. Thank you. That's very helpful. I'll be happy to be on the JPA.
Okay. So on that one, we have Casey and Annette as the two members and then myself as the alternate. And then with transportation. And as you see, it meets quarterly.
It's usually during the day.
It is.
It's during the, the workday during the school day.
Bus drivers attend. At ten thirty, eleven is.
Around eleven, ten. Yeah.
Yeah, and it's can be short. So like if you have, yeah, just FYI.
Yeah, I would be happy to do that one.
Catherine? Then. It could be alter, or then I'll be on it. I just, if this works with my days off, I can, I'll definitely be there. So on that one, Kawhi, we have Catherine and myself, and then we have Tracy as the alternate. The next one is the Sacramento County School Board Association. This meets semiannually in March and October. The assoc- association brings together school governing board members and the SAC County Office of Education on behalf of SAC, SAC County children as needed. Is this also part of the, well, that dinner is usually anybody can go.
Anybody can go to the dinner.
Mm hmm.
Are one of you? Two of you interested? Well, it looks like we only have one.
I'm interested in that one also.
Okay. Anybody else interested? Because you can, we can have one more than one, I'm sure. So we have Catherine and Tracy.
I'm happy to be an alternate on.
Okay. So on the, Kawhi, on that one, we have Catherine and Tracy as the members and then Annette as an alternate. And then the last one is Board Policy Committee.
I would like to be on that one.
On that one? Okay. We have Annette. And as you can see, we've only had one person in the past.
Right.
So, but if anybody else is interested.
I can be an alternate.
Okay. And I'll be on that as well if, if needed. Yes, as a member. So be Annette and myself as the members and then Tracy as the alternate. Okay. Is everybody fine with how that looks? Okay, so we need a motion. If I can get a motion to designate more board representatives to serve on committees.
I'll make the motion to. With what we.
Okay.
Have listed.
Thank you.
For item two one two point three nine three.
Yes. I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Casey. Got a second?
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two one two three nine three as follows. Two thousand and twenty-three committee members for cast city and schools together. Members Tracy Skinner and Casey Raboy, alternate Catherine Harper. For Galt Schools JPA, I have members Casey Raboy and Annette Coonsey, alternate Wesley Kegel. For transportation, Catherine Harper and Wesley Kegel members, Tracy Skinner, alternate. For the Sacramento County School Board Association, I have members Catherine Harper and Tracy Skinner, alternate Annette Coonsey. And for the Board Policy Committee, I have Annette Coonsey and Wesley Kegel, alternate Tracy Skinner, seconded by Casey Raboy. Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Annette Coonsey.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. And then moving on to two one two point three nine four. Review and or consider resources that define and clarify the board's governance and leadership roles and responsibilities, including but not limited to governance standards, meeting protocols, board rules and bylaws and other board development materials.
Okay. So this is informational item only. Our new board policy states that we should be reviewing this annually and with new trustees, it's a good time as well. So there's some resources that I've included for you. And then some of these items, you know, we might even consider within the next couple of months, a study session to discuss further some, some goals and CSB policies, CSBA policies as well. We have our board meeting protocol. This protocol we've been following since February of two thousand and twenty-two. We have our bylaw for governance standards. We have some information from CSBA on really the role and the board's jobs. CSBA throughout the years, throughout the year, they have multiple opportunities as well for training in these areas too, if, if anyone is interested. But I don't know if the board would like to have a discussion about any of these items. Would you like to talk about scheduling a, a study session on diving into any of these further?
Well, I would think with two new board members on here, that would, I think we definitely need to have a, a study session. Right? So we can get everybody up to, up to speed and kind of use more, doesn't ever hurt to have more knowledge.
Right. Would you like to try to first to schedule that in January or February? What would you like?
January fine with everybody?
Okay, we'll get something. We'll get something scheduled. We'll put out some dates and see what works for everyone. Okay.
Excellent. And then moving on. We have, it says, gee, board meeting protocols.
Now we start the normal business. So I will review our board meeting protocol. Our session is being recorded and the meeting is open to the public and the meeting is also being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. For public comments, public comments are three minutes per agenda item and the board shall limit the total time for public comment for each agenda item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public comment. To make a public comment via Zoom teleconference, notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom by the raised hand, by using the raised hand feature in Zoom during the agenda item to be addressed and you'll be identified by your display name in Zoom when called upon to speak. You could also make public comment in person. There's public comment forms indicating the item you would like to address and please give that to Ms. Bach, board meeting assistant. Can also email public comments to the superintendent twenty-four hours before the meeting and it'll be posted to our website with the agenda and they should be limited to four hundred and fifty words. And we did not receive, we have not received any, any email public comments. Board vote and connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a will call vote for action items. And we, if we lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes and regular board meetings shall be adjourned by ten thirty.
Excellent. Thank you. Moving on, does anybody have any questions on that subject? Oh, okay. Moving on. So we'll go to reports, LCAP goal number one. Engaging learners and pre-K through a focus on equity, access and academic rigor with inclusive practices and various learning environments. Number one is district reading assessments.
Thank you, Wes. As Kawhi brings up some of the data sets. I just want to remind the board that our district administers a reading assessment three times a year for all students in kinder through third grade. We refer to this assessment as the DRA, so district reading assessment. The purpose of the DRA is to measure students' ability to blend and manipulate sounds. It measures students' knowledge of spelling patterns of sight words. It also assesses accuracy, reading accuracy and fluency. Part of the LCAP goal number one includes an increase of our DRA results by ten percent each year. The data sets included in the packet reflect the overall percent of students who met all of the benchmarks. So we could have students that met all by one. They're not reflected in these percentages. So we're looking at children that met all the benchmarks for their grade level for the first trimester. So as you look at the first data set in your pocket, here you have the percent of children who met all the targets by school and by grade. If you look at that data, I would like to highlight for Greer, well, let's start with kinder and kindergarten. If you take a look at Lake Canyon, seventy-seven percent of the students met the reading targets. If you take a look at first grade, I would like to highlight Greer and Valley Oaks, Greer at sixty percent, Valley Oaks at sixty-nine percent. Second grade, I would like to highlight River Oaks with sixty-two percent of the children meeting all the reading benchmarks. And in third grade, I would like to highlight Marango Ranch with seventy-two percent of the students meeting all of the reading benchmarks. The second data set that you have there has information from the previous year as well as current results and as well as the target for the end of the year. So let's take a look at first grade for the fall of two thousand and twenty-two. In first grade, fifty-six percent of the children met all the reading ben- benchmarks. But if you take a look at that group when they ended kinder, they ended kindergarten with sixty-one percent of the children meeting all of the benchmarks. So when we look at previous scores with current scores, we call that a cohort. So a group of children. So this data reflects cohorts. So again, if we stay with first grade, they scored fifty-six percent met the reading benchmarks. Previously, again, at the end of kinder, it was sixty-one. If you add ten percent to the sixty-one, that's how we ended up with that target of seventy-one. We'll take a look again, for example, second grade. Second grade, currently they're at fifty-four. When they ended last year as first graders, fifty-three percent of them were meeting benchmarks. Add ten percent to that fifty-three and that's how we came up with the target of sixty-three at the end of this school year, four student cohorts. If you turn the page, you have that same cohort information by school. And before I go to the next data sets, do you have any questions, any comments regarding just the overall, how are we doing now at the end of the first trimester? As well as any questions or comments with the cohorts?
Well, I just have a little observation. I'm thinking, it seems that the, between the spring of two thousand and twenty-two and the fall two thousand and twenty-two, which is summer, summer break, that we have some drops in scores. I'm thinking that's pretty normal, right?
It is. Something to highlight, Wes, also is that we're also looking at different reading assessments. So in kindergarten, they have a certain set of skills that we measure. We have a different set in first grade. So it's almost expected, right, that we might have a different baseline at the beginning of the year since the assessments are not the same. That's a good observation.
Anybody else have any other questions as of right now for her?
I noticed on the, the calendar for the schools that they're doing testing in the end of January.
Yes.
District reading assessments and testing map.
Map testing.
Map testing.
Yes. So thank you, Casey, for bringing that up. If, if you take a look at, and I don't have a visual for you, I will have it for you next time. And we talk about reading. Reading is, is almost broken down into two sections. So the reading comprehension, that's not these assessments. These only assess children's reading skills, ideally to be at grade level or above by the end of third. So are they moving along well with that progression of different reading skills? MAP assesses comprehension. Different from this. So we take a look at both DRA and we look at MAP and then we try to gauge where the student is, where the student might need additional support. And we do the same thing by grade level. Do we need more support with certain grade levels? So anyway, that, the, thank you for highlighting that, Casey, because it is important to always look at two data sets to try to make decisions about instruction. So this is just one data set. The last data set that we have for you in your pocket is the same DRA information by student group. So not only do we want each individual student growing, each grade level at each school, we also look at student groups and we want to make sure that each student group is also moving forward. And I don't, I did not ask Kawhi to. Thank you. Ask Kawhi displays that information on the screen. I would like to highlight that for the district, we have four student groups above fifty percent. We have the white, Latino, socioeconomically disadvantaged and the reclassified fluent English proficient student groups that are above the fifty percent. You also have that information by grade, by school. As you look at some of these scores, keep in mind that each school has unique student populations. Each school has different factors. Each school has different student numbers. Each school has a different number of new teachers. Each, each school is, is unique. So it's important that when you look at these scores, that you take into consideration the demographics of each school rather than comparing one school against another. Yes.
Can you go over and let us know what EL stands for and SPED and SED, what those initials stand for, please?
Thank you, Wes. EL is English learners. And ESPED is students receiving special education services right now.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, any comments with our DRA results?
On the reclassified, it, it's just interesting to look at how high their reading scores are. They're the highest in the, the schools.
It is. Donna and I often talk about, you know, how these, these children are learning a second language, sometimes a third language, and yet the scores appear to be the, the highest most of the time. I think this could speak to how the, the brain processes information when you're having to learn in two different languages. But yes, it definitely stands out, doesn't it?
I just wanted to, to, this test is given just in kinder through third grade and most of our English learners, the target is to be reclassified by fifth or sixth grade. So these students who are reclassified and all the way from first, second or third grade are our students have just made, it's an individual, you know, basis, but these are the students who have just made a lot of, a lot of growth quickly. And there's a lot fewer of them in, in first through third, but we saw when Cleo shared the data before, when we looked at the map, that was.
To see the same pattern.
All the way from first through eighth grade, it was the same pattern with our students who had previously been English learners, but now had been reclassified fluent.
And we really want to see with the district reading assessments, you really want by third grade, you want eighty, at least eighty percent of your students that are able to pass those assessments. So that's why we're looking for ten percent growth and following the same.
that's why we're looking for 10% growth and following the same group of kids to see if they can get there by the time they're in third grade.
And I would say for, for any parent that is listening to us and, and for all of you, we want you to know that the more language children have, the easier their reading process. So we're really stressing, starting with, with PK. That is the level of oral language that students come to school with that will determine how quickly they manage these skills, how quickly they could manipulate sounds. So it's, it's important that our families continue to talk to children in full sentences and complete thoughts that we read to them, that we let them read anything they want. It's the oral language that makes the difference regardless of language. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Move on to LCAP goal number two, which is promoting pre-K whole learner development through social and emotional learning opportunities in a variety of environments.
So first, under LCAP goal two, we have the school climate survey results. We gave a very shortened version of the Healthy Kids Survey. We chose 10 questions from that much longer survey that we give in the spring. Our students in fifth through eighth grade took the survey, our parents and our staff. And so I just wanted to highlight some of the results for you, starting with the students. And I want to keep in mind that the goal is really 80% or higher for students that would choose yes all of the time or most of the time answering to these questions. And when I highlight, do the teachers and other grownups at school care about you? And also, do you feel safe at school? Those are areas that we have learned through the consultants with the healthy schools when we get our data back, that those are the two indicators that really help us determine how our students are doing in school. And so most of our, almost all of our campuses are at the 80% or higher or very close. We have Lake Canyon and McCaffrey that are in the seventies. I also want to note, I think we've talked about this, reviewing the data before, but it is typical that a middle school is scores lower than elementary school. That's a trend they see nationwide. And so if you see that our middle school is slightly lower than, than elementary, that is, that's very normal and expected. So most of our schools are at 80% or higher when you look at those two questions based on what students say. And when you look at what parents say, I wanted to highlight question five, the school has adults who really care about students and the school is a safe place for my child. Parents rated this extremely high 90 to 100%. Greer had 100% of parents that said their school is safe for their child. And McCaffrey really jumped up as well in the seventies for the, the parents. But really high scores from parents in, in all of these areas. And then looking at staff, this really jumped up as well. We looked again, is the school a safe place for students based on the staff perspective? And adults who care at the school really care about students. There were some hundred percents there at Lake Canyon based on the staff. I think there might even be a couple others. There's 100% at Marango. We are in the high nineties to 100% in these areas based on staff perception. So just kudos to our, all of our staff, what they're doing to make sure that our students feel safe. The parents feel that their children are safe at school. Just these percentages have really jumped up since last spring. Very small survey and we'll give the full one in the spring, but it was very, very positive. And it just goes to all the, the great work that our staffer, staffer doing to support the students. Anything else that you would like to highlight, any of your observations when you were looking at this, at this data?
Does anybody have any thoughts?
I just had one quick question on the number four interpretation. It says, do you get really bored at school? Most of them like yeses would be positive. Is that the reverse?
It is the reverse. So you want that to be a lower. You don't want that to be 80. Yeah. So the lower, the better.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? I have a question. Mine are number six and eight of the students. That's the number six is, do your teachers ask you what you want to learn about? All, all areas are low. And then same thing with question number eight, do the teachers and other grownups from your school check on how you are feeling? Has there been discussion on how we can raise these scores?
Yes, those were lower in the spring as well. And we've shared the data with admin and I don't know if any of our administrators would like to, to share their thoughts on this as well. Just more of the relationship building and checking in with students. I think really increasing our work with our social workers and counselors. We, we just really need to do more in that area to make sure that we are making sure that kids are, we're giving them a voice. And so we can tell that I think that score kind of correlates with the boredom question. So I think if we're more likely to ask them what they want to learn about, think what I care about, I would, would think maybe that boredom score would go down a little bit. And yeah, I, we agree, we, we've looked at that. And so I don't know if our administrators want to comment on that at all. I would just say too, one of the focuses we've had is on that social emotional learning through our classroom circles and our second step lessons about building a voice, how to advocate, how to problem solve, how to cope, how to manage. Just all those soft skills that we're trying to instill and build within them so that they feel heard and they feel that they're cared for, even though we know they're cared for, we want them to have that perception and that's going to take time. And I think just fifth and sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, those are, those are, those years where perceptions are changing. And so just being mindful of that and our staff really, I appreciate our staff being so diligent about that, that piece of their learning, that social emotional piece. So our counselors help with that.
And I know at least one school site, Greer, maybe Leah could, could touch on this, gave a follow-up survey to their fifth and sixth graders. Asked them what teachers could do or what could happen at school to increase this score.
There it goes. We gave it out to fourth through sixth grade to just gather a larger sample of the kids based on that question about what they thought about boredom and what that meant. Some of the things that they stated were just wanting more voice and that's coming out more in their classrooms. Throughout this last week, even we brought in asking teachers to be a little bit more mindful due to the holidays and that can be stressful for kids and letting them have some voice and choice in their classrooms before they leave. And a lot of the results from the fourth through sixth grade, they were positive about their school experiences, but just wanting to be able to voice, like they were learning science, what they would like to do with the knowledge that they were gaining in the classroom. So if they were studying something, let's say about biomes, then they would like to maybe even create some biomes that are generic, you know, but to use the knowledge that they gained in their classroom about that science and applying it. So that came out in that and we plan on like sharing that out with staff too, with what the students were responding to, the questions that we asked, which went a little deeper than what the survey had originally asked them. So, and it was really positive and it was important for them to be able to have an opinion on what they were learning. You know, sometimes they go off topic. They want to learn about video games at school.
Yeah. And we just, thank you. We just compiled this and shared it with admin last week. And so I think when they come back from winter break, they'll be discussing this and sharing this, the results with their teachers.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Does anybody have any questions? Any more questions on this? Seeing none, we'll go down to school calendar survey?
Yes, thank you. So what we did for the past few years, there's been some discussion about the possibility of a modified traditional calendar for our district. There's some districts, surrounding districts and more districts in California that have moved to a modified calendar, which typically has a week off in October. You typically have to start a little bit earlier in August to accommodate that extra week off. And so what we wanted to do before we drafted, well, two calendars and took it to GFA for a vote, we wanted to get the community's opinion because that is a big change and we are in a unique situation with two districts in this community and that of course impacts families. And so we wanted to see, we asked just a couple of short questions from staff and parents. And so I want to share the results with you. We had over 700 parents take the survey. We had almost 200 certificated staff and almost 200 classified staff as well. A good, good amount took the test.
If you don't, how many certificated staff do we have in the district?
Little over 200. I want to say about 215, 220.
So that's excellent.
Yes, almost all of them. Yes. We have over 300 classified.
And 300 classified.
So more than half.
Yes. Excellent. Thank you.
Yes. So you can see that when we asked, do, do you prefer to start school earlier and then have the week off in October? When we asked that question, parents, 370 parents said no, 338 parents said yes. So more parents said no to a week off in October. And then you can see the certificated staff, they definitely more said yes to a week off in October and then classified was really almost 50/50 either way. The one that we really wanted to see was the hardship. If it would create a hardship for our families and the parents, over 40% of our families said yes, it would be a hardship to have the high schoolers and the elementary school students not on that same schedule in October. Our calendars are not identical, but we're closer than we've ever been. And if we were to take a week off in October, that week, high school students are in session and they have their, their quarter system and they have their different breaks and it's just not going to work right now to try to do a modified traditional calendar for the high school. They start a week earlier than we do. So if we stay on a traditional calendar next year, we would still start a week later than high school. But we would be more in line the rest of the year. So I think it's just, you know, I, I would recommend that we don't look at a modified traditional calendar based on the feedback from our community. I don't want to create a hardship. It's almost 50%. I mean, that's pretty high. And so we would take, we're, we're looking at another draft of a traditional calendar. We have one draft of a traditional calendar. It's been brought up that we might consider having the parent conference week earlier in the year, the end of November, our teachers were getting some feedback that it might be a little too late and that they would like to meet with parents sooner than later. The way the calendar falls right now, the conference week, the minimum day week would be the week after Thanksgiving. It's kind of a hard week. And so we, we're looking at another model of having the week of minimum days for conferences in the middle of October. So we'll, it looks like they'll probably take that to a vote for GFA. But that's, it'll be a traditional calendar.
Because we do have the unique situation with having the high school, a different district. I know I would have to see their calendar. I don't have it, but in October, they do have a long weekend.
They do. They have two, two days off and we will have those two days off as well, but those are PD days for us. So students will be home, high school students will be home as well, but it's a workday for teachers.
I was thinking that's kind of a nice compromise as far as people that want that, people that want that October break.
Right.
Both school districts will have students out, but it's really the staff that has.
It's the staff. It's, it's not a break for staff because it would, those would be workdays. But they are considering, possibly considering the minimum days for conference the week after that. So they would have two PD days learning, no students, and then they'd fall into a minimum days in conference with parents. So we'll see if, what feedback we get from teachers on that.
Any other questions on that subject?
And we're hoping to bring a calendar to the board for a vote in January.
So now we'll go to other reports, School Works demographic report.
We have Ken Riddles with us tonight and he did let us know that he has another board meeting. So we have to kind of check to see if he's on. We might have to pass this report and come back to it. He's juggling two meetings tonight. Okay. School Works is there, the demographer that we work with to help us with, they've helped us over the years with our boundaries. They help us with enrollment projections, growth, and it's been about two, I mean, at least two, maybe three years since we've had an updated report. And so we thought it was time to bring that to the board, especially with some of the new growth in the community.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ken.
You were right, it has been two years.
And I'm going to share your PowerPoint now.
Yes.
There we go.
And thank you. And so again, we're here to present the results of our current analysis of your enrollment and projection. So let's go to the next slide. We'll do a quick executive summary. Basically, the enrollment was up 70 students this year compared to last year. We are projecting some increases over the next three years. And again, a lot of that's due to the TK program expanding. And there was actually an increase of 37 in TK this year. Then in the year four, five and six, we are seeing a projected decline. And so we've got some ups and then some downs. We have accounted for new development impacts. But that's really a interesting market that we'll have to watch closely over these next few years. So let's go to the next slide and talk about some of the data. This again, just to remind you that we have a GIS mapping system to analyze all of the data that does our enrollment projections. And so we look at four years of information to come up with our analysis. The next slide is we're going to talk about birth rates and TK and kindergarten projections. So as you can, just some of the data, if we go to the next slide, we see the visual. We show 10 years or actually more than 10 years of historic kindergarten enrollment in comparison to how many students were born five years before those kids started school. And on the yellow bars, that's our projected enrollment over the next four years based on the births that have occurred. So we see a spike next year where there were more births. So we should see a larger kindergarten class this coming school year. And then it drops back down. So we're having some of the lowest births ever in years three and four.
Yeah.
Then on the next slide, it shows our TK numbers. And so in blue, it shows our historic numbers. We can see we had an increase this year as two more months became eligible. And then two more months next year. And then by 2025, we have all four-year-olds eligible. And so we'll see that continue to increase over the next three years. Then on the next slide, we're going to talk about some new development numbers. So the following slide summarizes the numbers and shows a map. So we, we worked with the planning department and talked with the builders and trying to do our best guess of what's happening. Again, there's about 3,300 units on the books and we're anticipating just over 700 of those will be built over the six-year projections that we've done for the district. So again, still a lot more to come, but that's, I think, what the construction rate is projected to be. Again, the housing market's been pretty challenging lately. So we're monitoring that closely. Then on the next slide, we're going to show the results of mobility over time. And so the following slide actually shows all the, the graphic for that. And so the green bars are the actual enrollment this year by grade level. So we can see the largest class was in grade seven. And so once we start graduating some of those larger classes, that's what's going to cause a decline into the future. But you can see comparing to how many kids started school, overall, whoever starts schools mostly ends up still in your school several years later. We do see in grades six, seven and eight, that you have more kids now than when those kids started kindergarten. And so there is a little bit of growth over time. And then the next slide, we're going to start finally getting to the summary of our projections. So as the slide after this will show the graphic. And so we could see 10 years of history. And again, the numbers were relatively stable, just slightly declining until the pandemic. And again, the numbers were relatively stable, just slightly declining until the pandemic hit and the numbers were really down. And so we see that bouncing back up the next couple of years as TK becomes a full grade. And then again, some more declines into the future, just because a number of children being born is less than we used to have. And then the next slide is a summary by school for all the projections. So we could see which schools are experiencing, uh, any increases and declines. And then the following slide. Let's go to the next slide. Shows the one-year projection for this coming school year where we're up 73 students. So slightly more than we saw an increase this year. And we will see that we're projecting TK to be 131 next year. And then I think we have one, another slide here that talks about our overall utilization. Oops, go back two slides. We always like to compare our projected enrollment to our school capacities. And here we're showing fair sites, the most impacted, once TK becomes a full grade, I will have about just under 200 students and we calculated they have a capacity of about 200. Again, really depends on how we're going to load those TK classes into the future. Um, and then the other one that was a little bit, uh, impacted was Lake Canyon at 91% uh, in six years from now. Again, uh, at 530 students projected with a 578 capacity. So, but overall, your schools are in great shape with their current boundaries. And so it should be functional for the next several years. And then the following page after that just showed the same information in a map. And with that, I'd like to be able to answer any questions.
I noted it's, boy, if this really happens by 28, 29, some of our elementary schools are going to have really low enrollment. Did you see how low Marengo gets?
Yeah, and, and that's hopefully temporary until, again, the housing market picks up and, you know, has some additional impacts into the future. So there's a lot on the books, it's just a matter of watching to see when it's going to.
Ken, I did have one question, I noticed that the yield rate, um, of the percentage of students or the amount of students that are coming from one household really dropped.
Yes, and again, that's mostly due to birth rates, just families are getting smaller and there's fewer households with children in them. And so we've seen that statewide and it's, it's impacting everyone across the state.
Yeah, is it barely point three of a student coming out of the house now?
Yeah, and it's for the, for the elementary grades, that doesn't count the high school kids. And again, a lot of that's been also due to the housing prices and affordability.
Anybody have any questions for Ken?
No.
No, no questions.
No questions. Thank you so much, Ken, for your thorough report.
Thank you.
All right, and again, there's a lot more detail in the full report, so feel free to browse through it at your leisure.
Thank you.
All right. Good night.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to the report number two, California School Board Association Annual Education Conference.
All right, so the end of November, beginning of December, trustee Casey Raboy and Annette Kunsy and myself, we attended the conference in San Diego. Um, some great general session speakers, some, some great breakout sessions. There was a lot to choose from, lots of different topics, um, almost every area of education you could think of to attend. They noted that it was the largest participation in their history of having this conference. And they also noticed that this is the highest number of new trustees that they've had. So a lot of new trustees attending, a lot of turnover, I think we, we understand why. I attended a, a breakout session, uh, regarding wellness centers. Um, it was a high school district, but it made me really think of what we could do or possibly do to our wellness center at McCaffrey. I've not yet debriefed with, um, Principal Castillo, but I, I do have some ideas that I would like to share with him. We finally have the additional counselor, we have two counselors now at McCaffrey and we have a mental health clinician. And so some of the models that we learned about it from this breakout session talked about how the counselors and clinicians facilitate the wellness center and, and just some really great trainings. They have a menu of trainings throughout the school day and after school for, for students to attend, whether it's a grief session, whether it's um, depression, um, those kinds of things, a menu option and, um, just some, and there was, it was a district nearby too. And so I was even thinking of, you know, maybe the counseling staff and, and administration, seeing if we can visit the, the wellness center. It was, they're, they're very student-led, again, it was a high school level. Um, but I think there's some things, takeaways that we could, we could do at our middle school as well. We're at kind of the beginning stages of developing a wellness center, just finally got more staff on board. And so I'll continue, I'll, I'll talk with Principal Castillo about that and see what, what we can do and maybe even take a little visit.
Um, I'm just feeding off that, uh, observation I've seen. I'm a sports guy, watching a lot of sports, so I get a lot of the colleges now are hiring, um, mental health to work with all their athletes.
Wow.
So it's kind of, uh, I think it would be a great thing for our district
Mm hmm.
to, uh, add that, I think that definitely our students need it, especially after, uh, the COVID and, uh, trying to get, catch back up. I think, uh, I just, I've seen, I'm, I'm around a lot of these, between baseball and the little organizations I belong to, uh, definitely would be, be a much needed asset to our district.
Yeah. And I, I didn't know if trustee Kunsy or, um, Raboy, any, any thoughts, any comments on the, the conference?
Um, well, I went to many conferences, but, you know, sessions, but, um, one of the ones that I, I thought was very interesting is I went to the, um, dual immersion, uh, program where, um, it, it was just really interesting how high these biliterate students are testing, like, you know, what we see in our reclassified students. Really, really high test scores, these programs have very long waiting lists, you know, like 40, 50 students. Um, it was just, everything said was very positive, um, about these, these programs, how desirable they are. Um, many, you know, everybody that's there is saying, I wish my kids had this opportunity when they were that age. If they could have gone back, these are the students that the colleges are looking at. Um, they're biliterate, I mean, they're, they can speak and read and write in two languages and converse. And it's just, it's really a neat program. I hope that we can
Yeah.
get some of that going.
Yeah, we, in a couple of months, I think, I can't remember if it's February, March, I outlined, um, what programs will present. But we will have our dual language immersion program presented, it's going very well, parents are very happy. Um, and that will expand to kindergarten next year, so. Yeah.
So, um, I just wanted first to say thank you because the travel arrangements and everything was so seamless. So I wanted to say thank you for your support on that. And, uh, it was nice to be able to connect with the high school team as well while we were there. Um, I actually, um, was able to attend the new trustee, which I think was helpful to sort of see the lay of the land. And also, um, the last speaker, I just absolutely, um, adored her, Tara Westover, she's the author of Educated. I thought she had a really, really good message. Um, and then I attended some of the policy, I'm a little bit of a policy junkie, so I was able to attend those and very much interested in and interested to see, um, what happens with the budget, um, coming up as well with the administration. So, um, there was a couple of themes that I sort of gave me pause, that I just sort of want to see how they translate to the district. Um, seemed to go a little bit beyond information sharing. And so I did share that feedback with the, um, with the planners. Um, and so I, uh, like I said, I'll just sort of see how that translates through the district. But overall was a great experience and looking forward to future education. Um, I love education and, and I think that will help me sort of serve as well here. So thank you again for the opportunity.
Absolutely, and thank you, Kawhi, for the organs, organizing us to get there.
Okay. That's it for the, for the reports. Thank you guys for sharing, appreciate it. Um, moving on to Jay, Routine Matters, New Business, uh, 212.395, a consent, the consent calendar. Uh, we, when you go over the.
There's really, there's not much, we do not have donations. Um, the hiring is, is back to one page, no, no retirees. Um, we have a couple of contracts, uh, non-public or agencies that are routine. Um, we have two contracts from TerraCon, pretty routine for geotechnical engineering services that we have to have done when we have a project. So that's for Valley Oaks, the new classroom building and the MOT, Maintenance Operation, um, Transportation Shop.
Is there any, uh, questions on the consent calendar? Uh, seeing none, if I can get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 212.395, Consent Calendar.
Annette, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Are you Casey?
Mm hmm.
Uh, thank you, Casey, Casey with the second.
Thank you, I have a motion from Annette Kunsy to approve item number 212395, seconded by Casey Raboy, Wesley Cagle.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Uh, moving on to, uh, 212.396, uh, we can, we don't need that. We already got that, so we'll, 212.397, uh, Board Consideration of Approval of a Purchase of a New District Delivery Box Truck.
So this has been going on for some time, as far as the regulations that the California Air Resource Board has been implementing. They've, um, done kind of a timeline where they phase out, um, old trucks with old engines. You either have to replace the engine, replace the truck, uh, and it's been going on for quite a while. The latest, um, update was in 2014, which banned the use of engines, um, from model year 2006 to earlier. And, um, our delivery truck is a 2000. And so it's currently out of compliance for a few reasons. Uh, the particulate matter filter was something that potentially could be retrofitted if, if possible on your, your truck or your, um, uh, bus. And so, uh, for us, the particular filter that we have couldn't be retrofitted on such an old vehicle. Um, and replacing an engine in a 22-year-old truck just isn't a cost efficient, um, or feasible possibility. And so there's also other things that are now happening, compartment flooring's deteriorating. Other components are starting to fail and the door won't shut, things like that. And, um, and the parts are becoming obsolete. And that's usually why we end up surplusing a vehicle is it's so old that they can't find the parts to replace it. I've brought a couple of vehicles over the last year to surplus that have just been sitting over there because they don't make the parts anymore. Um, and so the lead time on vehicles right now, uh, you just walking on a lot and finding these things is, is, um, not what happens anymore post-COVID, really, supply chain and different factories, um, shutting down. And so the lead time for the purchasing this vehicle is six to eight months. So we're trying to be proactive, um, instead of waiting for it to be in the middle of the street somewhere in Galt where, you know, and because we, um, we don't want a disruption like that, uh, he, our warehouse, um, uh, delivery person, Bill, he's, you know, he's buzzing around all day delivering mail and goods and helping with larger, um, items like the banned equipment he does on a Saturday when they have to go somewhere, classroom furniture. And we really don't want to have to rent a van, you know, for six months or something, waiting for a vehicle. And so, um, the cost of the vehicle, the quote is attached, there's a, a one quote for the, there's a truck and then they put the box on it. So there's, um, two separate quotes, the total is 133,000 and, um, that would come from, from general fund. And so board approval is recommended.
Um, I personally, in my work, we have been dealing with this for, like when that first came out, so like, we drive lifts, uh, big bulldozers and all that. We've been purchasing new equipment throughout these years, so I totally understand this whole law, what's going on. A lot of truckers have had to get rid of their trucks because of this, so it is, uh, it is a major thing. So, uh, I totally understand where, what we need for this, uh, does anybody have any questions?
Just another note, we did also follow the formal bid process. And so this was, um, you know, our, uh, we only had one bidder, but we did follow our process of going out for bid. I forgot to mention.
Okay. All right. Okay, um, so no other questions? Can I get a motion for the purchase of the new truck?
I'll make the motion. Approve 212.397.
All right, thank you, Tracy, can I get a second? Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Thank you, I have a motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number 212397, seconded by Catherine Harper, Wesley Cagle.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Annette Kunsy.
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Moving on, so, uh, number 212.398, Board Consideration of Approval of Valley Oaks Elementary School Pre-Construction Services Agreement.
Great, thank you. We issued a request for proposal to find a general contractor to support us with building a permanent classroom building at Valley Oaks that we've talked about, six classrooms and bathrooms, custodial closet and it would be removing four portables. And so we went out to bid, we had a very good turnout, we had four general contractors that submitted proposals. We had Auto Construction, SMB James Construction, Swinerton and Broward Builder, Builders. And so we went through the process of evaluating the four contractors. Um, just past the construction, um, agreement, you have an overview of the scoring and the process that we have to take, go through. So phase one is really just making sure that the general contractor meets all the mandatory requirements. It's a pass or fail section, you're looking at their insurance, their bonds, their financial information, their safety history, their experience. And they all four passed that, and we do have the scores there for you. Um, SMB James did score the highest there, they were at the, the 148 out of 50. They were all pretty high though, in, in that area, there were a couple variations, maybe on the safety or with maybe something in their financials. Um, but SMB James did score ahead in that one. And then when you look at phase two, you're looking at the total price score. So that is the next page there, you can see, we looked at their pre-construction services fee. We looked at their lease, leaseback fee and their general conditions cost. And SMB James came ahead there as well, they scored a total of 94 out of 100. One of Auto was extremely high, they, they had a zero in that area. Um, the Broward Builders, they were pretty high as well. Um, Swinerton, they came in pretty good at 88, um, but when you, you rate them, SMB James, they were higher in the area for the total price. And then they were also a little higher in the mandatory requirements. They are a general contractor that we've worked with for the past five years. They've been our contractor for four of our large projects, they've been an excellent partner. They finish on time, excellent communication. Um, they finish on budget or under budget, they're just, they're a very reputable, um, honest firm to work with. And so we were happy to see that, um, they were able to, to provide a, a great offer here to stay competitive. So we are recommending to, um, issue a contract, it would be for the pre-construction services that will take probably about two months. That's when they would secure their, their subs, that's when they would come up with the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price. So we would have to bring that back to the board in a couple of months. That's when they, they give us their timelines, they give us the full pricing for the project and we issue the lease, leaseback contracts at that time.
Any questions? Concerns?
I just had a quick question on the construction. Is the design, do they factor that into when they come back as well? Or is it, what is the design?
They do. A lot of the design work is the architect does. A lot of that's the architect and architect is DCA for this project. But they will work closely, SMB James will work closely with the architect the next couple of months. Because what they do is the architect comes up with the design and then the general contractor has to try to fit in our budget and say, you know, okay, I recommend this, you know, architect wants this tile roofing, the GC comes back, no, we want aluminum roofing. You know, that type of thing. It's more cost effective. So it's kind of going back and forth for a couple of months, working together. They know what our budget is. They know we have about $5 million in state facility funds for this. And so they've got to keep it in that budget and still meet the architect's design as well. Or else we can't go forward with the project. And they do, they know that ahead of time what our budget is.
And the architect designs need to get approved by the state?
Yes. And we're in the process. It's in the process. We're paying DSA fees right now. It's $50,000 DSA fees. But we're in the plan, beginning plan approval stage with DSA right now.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Can we get a motion for 212.398?
I'll make the motion for 212.398.
I'll get a second.
I have a second.
All right. Thank you, Annette.
Thank you. I have a motion from Casey Raboy to approve item number 212398, seconded by Annette Coonsy, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Tracy Skinner.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Excellent. Moving down, down the line, last one, 212.399, Or Consideration of Approval of Galt Joint Union Elementary School District Resolution Number Eight, California State Preschool Program Continued Funding Application.
Okay, thank you. Fair Sight Elementary and Early Learning Center. It also includes our, our state preschool program, which is CSPP, California State Preschool Program. Kulji Nijar is our principal over at Fair Sight. And so annually, we do need to apply for funding. State preschool funds, approximately 96 students at Fair Sight in the preschool. It's ages. The students need to turn three by September 1st. And then we also serve four-year-olds in that program. Next year, it'll be, the four-year-olds will be between April 2nd and September 2nd. So a lot fewer four-year-olds and more and more three-year-olds. We also, just as an ancillary beside the 96 state preschool students that we serve with this funding request, the application, we also serve 48 other preschool students at Fair Sight with other funding sources. And one of those funding sources funds our four-year-olds who don't qualify for TK and also don't qualify for our state preschool program. But with the additional funding, we were able to get them in a year before they go to kindergarten as well. As they were talking about in the demographics report, we'll move up by two months. So seven months worth of, of seven months of our four-year-olds will be going into TK at Fair Sight. And then two more months and two more months. But welcome addition to, to Galt because we're the only preschool in town. And so this is, it's an important program for us, the CSPP program. So approval is recommended. Any questions? Thank you.
And there's no questions. Can I get a motion for the 212.399?
Motion to approve 212.399.
Awesome. Thank you, Catherine. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number 212399, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Kegel.
Aye.
Casey Raboy.
Aye.
Annette Coonsy.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Down the line. Is there, Kawhi, is there any public comments?
There are no public comment requests, Mr. Kegel.
Thank you. Pending agenda items. This time, if there's something that you, anybody on the board would like to see on a future agenda item, let us know. And then we can get it put on. So Annette and Catherine, if there's anything that you're interested in hearing about, seeing, let us know.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right.
We'll get that. Special board meeting scheduled for January.
Okay. And it should be the, the, start getting the reports from the different.
Yes, yes. We put a calendar out. January will be our teachers on special assignments. So really, Leo will lead that and we'll give you a report on what our teachers on special assignment do for our district and our students and staff.
Thank you very much for that. Is there any more? The good of the order? Seeing none. I would like to say thank you for making me the president. I appreciate it. All right. Thanks. Best meetings adjourned.